So, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular Town Council meeting, March 16th, 2023. Can I please get a roll call?
Holloway present.
Bennett present.
Buda present.
Grossman present.
Fulmer present.
All right, let it be known, we've established a quorum. If we could have a stand and have a moment of silence.
And pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we're going to start off with recognition of some visitors that Mr. Hozie will be accepting on their behalf. But we have three officers that we are going to be recognizing. Juana Diaz, for five years of service, Thomas Lynch, five years of service, and Ricardo Finley, also five years of service. I'll send those down to you.
The chief could receive one on behalf of the officers.
Okay.
I'll take it for Rick.
There you are.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then, in honor of National Library Week, the 2023 proclamation. Yes, please, I just set it down.
Okay, proclamation 2023-0316, National Library Week, April 23rd through 29th, 2023. There's more to the story. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life; and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status; and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all; and whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships; and whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing Internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs; and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals; and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all; and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Cape Charles Town Council hereby designates April 23rd through 29th, 2023, as National Library Week and encourages all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available, adopted by the Town Council of Cape Charles the 16th day of March, 2023.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation for the library.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's unanimous. All right, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Laura Wigan. Hello, good evening, Mayor and members of the Town Council. I'm going to pass some pictures here for you guys to look at. I didn't have time to make copies for everybody. My name is Laura Wigan. I reside at 632 Madison. My wife Michelle and I have owned our home since 2016, and we moved here full-time over two years ago. Since we've moved in, the business located two doors down from our property has been had an influx of the high cube 53-foot container trucks coming in. I understand they're zoned in a commercial zoning, however, neither the streets of historic Cape Charles nor their loading dock were built for these additional 13 feet of these trucks. Normally, they're 40-feet trucks, but since COVID, they have been 53-footers. So, the 53 feet is not even including the cab of the truck, so you've got an extra up to 20 feet for their cab and their sleeper. So, take this into account, that our lots, our parcels are 40 feet wide, so when these trucks pull up, they take up two parcels of, you know, two mine and my neighbor's parcel. And the streets aren't wide enough for them to turn on, so the house across the street, or the houses across the street, have had their trees broken, their curbs broken from them trying to pull into the dock when they pull up. And I have pictures of the last page submitted from my neighbor across the street of when they tore down the electrical line from the house next to me. A good thing it's vacant, so the electricity was not on. They've torn down our Internet cable going across the street. And those are the skilled drivers that can actually back it into the loading dock. Now, the not-so-skilled drivers just decide to park it in the middle of the street and do their loading and unloading there, which blocks not only the flow of traffic, but blocks our driveway, so we have no access to get out of our driveway until after they leave. This company has a huge parking lot on the other side, across the street from them, on Fig and Madison. And our thoughts are, maybe they could pull up in there and do their loading and unloading when they can't get into the dock properly, when they have these 53-footers. I spoke to the owner of the company several months ago, and she said that these 53-foot, the high cube trucks are being used since COVID due to the shortage of trucks and expense, cut down on expense because they can pack more product in there. So, that's not going to change. Last month, I called VDOT to ask if anything could be done, and they said they absolutely can put a limit on the length and the height of trucks coming into the historic district. They even recommended putting a sign out on Stone Road where 642 goes off to the left that will give them a clean exit from town without getting stuck coming into town. But they wanted to work with you guys and you as our Town Council, you know, hopefully could give them the stamp of approval to do something like that. Basically, we're just asking for restriction on these high cube trucks, the 53-footers. It has become a sincere problem, and I'm sure my other neighbors aren't too thrilled about it either. Nobody else could come today, but I'm sure that they're willing to speak as well. So, thank you for your time, and we ask that you please look into what can be done to restrict these extra-large trucks. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's the only one that's signed up.
And no?
Nothing was submitted in writing.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda format, approval of the minutes, and approval of the January 31st, 2023 financial report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No discussion? All opposed? Unfinished business, we have none. New business, the harbor development certificates.
Good evening. If you don't mind, I'm going to take just a minute, since there are new members of this board and they've never done the harbor development process, I just want to walk you through what that is again, or remind the old ones as well what that process is because it has been some time. In our zoning ordinance, there are two areas that govern the Harbor District. One is under our general zoning regulations of Article III, which talk about the Harbor District, and then we have Article nine. Thank you, Article nine, which is the Historic Harbor Overlay District. While, yes, this property is in that Historic Harbor Overlay District, these are new structures that are being proposed, so I really didn't run it through that process just because we were going to have the Historic District.
Review Board.
Review Board being part of this review process because it overlapped into their jurisdiction. So, I let them handle the Historic District Review component of things, and I convened the Harbor Board to handle their component of things contained in Article III of the Harbor District process. So, with that slight explanation of the two, within our Harbor District, it does require the Harbor Area Review Board to review this in advance. I did include in the staff packet for you, I know there's a lot of wording in here, but everything that was in that green box on Page Two of our staff report is really the criteria that is contained in the zoning ordinance. So, I wanted you to have a chance to refresh yourself and know what it was, and those are the elements that we are looking at when we're looking at these applications. And that is what the Harbor Board looked at when they made their recommendation to you. As I said, we actually did this as a joint meeting with the Historic District Review Board so that we could maximize staff appearance just once and go through the presentation. We didn't quite do it once, I think we did it like four times because people came at different times during that meeting, but we got it done, and we had a great conversation, I believe, as a whole. So, with that said, the three applications that we reviewed all dealt with applications coming from the town itself. The first one dealt with constructing a 1,337-square-foot building for the public restrooms and visitor center on a portion of the lot which the town is leasing from Canone Railroad. Again, we're only going to use a portion of that lot, but the total lot that Canone owns down there is just over 42 acres. We're using a much smaller amount of that. I think it's about two, I'm going to get my numbers wrong, two, two-and-a-half acres, including the parking lot that you already have a lease for. The second application we reviewed is there's work being proposed for the exterior renovation on the decommissioned railcar, also located on that same leased area from Canone Railroad. And then the third project we reviewed that evening was a 15,494-square-foot municipal building on a lot owned by the town just behind the Rosenwald School off of what is part of the Cassatt Parkway new road system, as we would know it as, near the tower, the electrical tower that's over there. I think I got it all in there, so. And again, we have provided you maps of each of those areas if you were not quite familiar where we were talking about. So, again, I wanted to provide you all the details of what's contained in each of these presentations. You are highly familiar because you are the applicant, and I think you have been seeing some of this along the way to move it this far down the road, so I'm not going to take tons of your time going through it. We did want to just negotiate or make everyone aware of where we are standing with this. So, relative to the bathroom building and visitor center, we want to, again, stress that half of the building will house five unisex restrooms, which will include hand-washing stations within the confines of each stall, and will also provide a custodian's room with mop sink and storage room. The other half of the building will serve as a visitor center. We also explained some of the site work, which really is the purview of the Harbor Area Development Certificate itself. And so, again, Bob Panic is the project manager for this project, really went through that logistics, and we've included the site plan, so you have that as well. We've dealt with everything from where we'd place the trash receptacles, parking, how much of that would be paved, how much sidewalks we would put around the building itself to ensure that we have ADA compliance all the way through. In terms of how this connects to the car, because we view them as a kind of combined project area, and so I'm going to stray into that area as well, because all the parking, et cetera, associated with this would also affect the train car. We've tried to make sure that we have room for golf cart parking in this site plan. We will be able to accommodate putting some bicycle racks there as well for bike parking, and of course, there's vehicle parking there. The one thing that is not fully clear yet and can come after the fact is just exactly where all the signage will be. It doesn't always have to be at the site because we do feel, and I'm making that recommendation as your zoning administrator, that there needs to be additional signage located outside of this site area elsewhere in town so that people know it's over there, that's all. And again, just for clarity's sake, it has been confirmed that once this is constructed and built, the porta potty will be leaving. And hopefully, the timeframe of this is anticipated for the end of this summer. So, that's application number one. For number two, for the railcar restoration, they're looking to move forward with all the metalwork that needs to occur on the railcar, and all of that is detailed in the application for you. So, again, they're trying to do, new steel would be primed with a coat of metal primer to keep the new steel in good shape until a final coat of paint is applied by others. They will make sure it is fully decommissioned, doesn't move, and they're going to get all that work done at this point in time. They have indicated there's a longer-term plan, that they will be putting up some graphics on the windows of the train car itself that are meant to be a silhouette of what would be passenger traffic on it, and eventually, they will be submitting sign applications because they want to, on the outside of the train car, put sort of a walking path of information, and so that will be forthcoming as well. We have provided renderings in the packet, which was available to everyone to see what this will look like, and I'll stop on those two if you have any questions before I move on to the municipal building.
I'll just ask, Mr. Mayor, do you want a motion on each one individually? Yes. Okay, I'm ready to make a motion on recommending approval, Town Council approval of our visitor center project with downtown restrooms.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, which I would have done at the end because I just want to make sure that the look of the visitor center and the look of the new municipal building are, they appear in the drawings to be very similar, but that it sort of becomes a town look that I saw in the municipal center, it was going to be hardy siding, but that we maintain some sort of cohesive look to that.
That is the intent. We don't have updated design guidelines, which is something that's on our to-do list to do. However, lacking that, yes, I appreciate you picking that up, that there was an attempt to have some architectural flavor, look the same there as the municipal center and with the Rosenwald School. So, that was the.
Couple little questions. So, you mentioned that the porta potty would be going away, but also the porta potty and silver bullet at Peach Street will be going away?
Yes, I believe you meant the silver bullet would be going away.
All of it's going to go.
But also, there's the porta potty by the train right now, right?
Right.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure we weren't limiting ourselves to that one.
The porta potties and the silver bullet will be going away.
Well, that's why I didn't call it the silver bullet, because the town manager did not refer to it as a silver bullet during his presentation. I just said porta potty.
Will they be going back where they once came from, or are they moving somewhere else in town? The silver bullet?
Well, the porta potties aren't ours, so they'll go back to the vendor, and the silver bullet was purchased for that spot. It's never been anywhere else before, so the intent is to try and fix it and only use it for events going forward. We're not going to.
And my second question was, now with all this, the improved signage for the facilities, will there also, will the improved signage also include improved signage for the parking area and specifically the standard public parking "P" sign that people look for? Because I'm still getting a lot of complaints about the "P" as in parking.
Sorry. That is where my brain went, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's weird, just, sorry.
Yes.
Clear segue, because, yeah, we're still getting complaints about the lack of signage.
Yeah, we switched the signs rather quickly last fall for Best of Friday, so we tried to make use of what we already had. But yes, when we do a larger signage effort, we need to do a better job of directing.
Excellent.
Yes.
That was it, thank you.
If I could, just to chime in, in terms of continuity of look, the visitor center is intended to be styled like a railroad station. That was an intentional design, so it's not going to look exactly like the municipal building. But in terms of like lighting and some of the exterior features that will be coming, my understanding is we're going to replicate the same lighting that we use in Central Park and in other spots of the town to have that mimic on these municipal sites as well.
Materials will be similar.
Yes.
And then, one last thing I had, as we look at the pavers that are going around there, can we look at permeable paving? Is that part of the plan?
Not part of the current plan.
There will likely be cost implications, that's, make that point mute.
It's rather limited paving, right?
The paving is only for ADN.
Correct, correct.
The access, especially as we get.
And to get them from the parking spot to the park.
Any other discussion, or are we ready to vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes unanimously, please. All right, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the Harbor Development Certificate for the railcar restoration.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question. It shows in the pictures as blue, but the wording says black.
Yeah, this is just, was taken from, the picture was sent to the group that we're working with through Main Street of the current, so that this wasn't designed on what it will actually, from our.
It will be black?
It will be black.
Yeah, I think the idea is to return it to what the original railroad colors were versus the Bay Coast Railroad colors.
Is black the original?
Black, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, so she's going to do some updates of this, including putting in where the storyboards would be and the rockers and some things like that, once we get a little further along, and we'll change it then to the color.
Okay, all right. So, all in favor of the railcar restoration?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and maybe onto the.
Onto the municipal building, just again, so everybody is aware where it is, this is getting us more to be centrally located in the town proper as a whole. All of the incorporated areas of the town, it is putting us behind the Rosenwald School just off of the Cassatt Parkway expansion. We will have a new entrance, it will be coming off of Cassatt Parkway. Again, that stretch used to be known as Old Cape Charles Road, I'm trying to continue to drill into my brain, it's Cassatt Parkway, so sorry. We believe we have worked through the site plan pretty well, that we're going to have ample parking allocated to serve the employees and the new town hall and the police department, as well as all the visitors that may be coming to the building. We think we've also fashioned the parking lot with golf cart spaces, et cetera, and we think we've got just the right amount of space so that we are not over-designing the lot, and that was really important to us to keep that in mind because, again, we have needs during the day, and then we have needs during the evenings for the night meetings, but we don't want to put too large a lot, especially on the weekends, where it's just going to be non-used. So, I think we've now hit the right balance of the number of parking spaces that we would need. I did give an administrative allowance to reduce the parking requirements under our ordinance to make that happen, and I provided that to our project manager and the architects doing this project already. Again, we've indicated we will have a parking lot that will be paved in front of the building, and the remainder of it will be gravel. Again, we're only parking as nominally as we need to, to deal with ADA compliance and to make it safe for those in travel. Everywhere else, we tried to keep it as permeable as we can. As we indicated, it'll be 12 golf cart parking spaces. I know we are still having conversations with the Rosenwald School to see how we might be able to share some of our parking needs. They're actually coming in with their site plan to me tomorrow, and that's going next month to the Harbor Area Review Board for their review, so I don't quite have an answer on how we might have some shared concepts here, but we're working on that. I just wanted to make you aware, during the public, during the meeting, we did have a member of the public express some comments regarding police data communications at the new site due to police being further from the road, and they wanted to just make sure that is incorporated into the town's thought processes as we're developing this project moving forward, that there are proper antennas at the right size and height to address its new location and the new tree areas that we have to consider, that we don't currently have those issues today. Again, there was some conversation about have we staffed or sized the building appropriately for our staffing needs now and into the future. The town manager did respond to that in the affirmative that they believe that that has been fully incorporated at this point. Again, I know that there, again, a question came forward and provided the answer that the estimated cost would be approximately $4.5 million. Again, that is not a final number, and that's still coming to this board. And again, there was a question asked, would there be backup generators if there is space available? So, that was raised as an issue. Again, coming back to the look of the building, it was a reference that we would most likely be looking at hardy board siding and a metal roof, and yes, in the building, we are planning for an elevator to be fully ADA compliant. And someone from the public at the meeting asked, how would one walk to the new building from this town? And we actually spent a fair amount of time walking people through that, that there will be ways to get to this building. They may not be the traditional way of walking to our town hall today, but yes, you can still walk to the new location, so. So, with that said, we did have an affirmative recommendation from the Harbor Area Review Board in support of this application as presented.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we approve a Harbor Development Certificate for the new municipal building.
Second.
Any discussion?
I will make a comment. If you look at the exterior view, too, for the garage that is adjacent to the building, I had raised the point at the Harbor Area Review Board that that carpet on the garage looked a little tall and was blocking windows unless they intended to use that roof area for seating, which they do not, so they're going to look at lower than that carpet.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you. All right, IT Support Contract Amendment and Extension.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is for our IT contractor that we've had for a number of years now, and we've been very satisfied with the work. And coming from other places, I can tell you that this is really good value for what we're getting. It's a two-year contract. Last time, this came up two years ago, there was no rate increase at that time. So, there is a rate increase this time, but if you were to project it over two contracts, it's a reasonable rate increase. So, also, something that we, it's important to us, that we've requested is remote access, and it is a subscription to do that, and it's really beneficial for the town because otherwise, if we have an issue, we have to wait for the contractor to come and fix it. But I've had a couple of times where I've had an issue, I email him, I see, he gets into my computer, he fixes it, and I'm working again. So, what we'd like to do is include in the contract the subscription costs for that remote access. It does ultimately serve us better that way. So, with those additional changes to the contract, I just wanted to assure you that we're very satisfied with the performance of the contractor, and I would recommend approval.
I have a motion. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize our manager to execute the two-year contract for renewal with Inversa Mines.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question. I noticed in the budgets, I think you captured all the IT for the town staff, and the budget was $8,000?
No, I think it's.
Higher than that. Because the question I really have is, really, we authorize you to proceed as long as a contract isn't over $30,000?
Oh, yeah, no, it's not that much, no.
Yeah, but I'm just asking them, why bring it to us for approval unless there's an open-ended?
Gotcha.
That's really what I'm looking for.
I don't have a good answer for that. It's because we always did, we always have.
Okay, all right.
I'll look at that, though.
I'd say in the future, you are authorized.
If it's in the budget, right.
Right.
You're right.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that's passed unanimously. The USDA Rural Development Grant, loan for purchase of police vehicle and public works equipment.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is just a housekeeping item. You've already, the council's already approved this as part of the budget process, but in order to make the application, we're required to do the standard resolution. The only notable thing is that, if you recall, we did remove the public works piece of equipment at mid-year, then I asked you to put it back. But, so this reflects the original budget that you approved, and I would recommend approval.
I have a motion, please. I'll make a motion that Town Council adopt Resolution 2023-0316.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we're going to have a roll call vote.
Holloway, yes.
Bennett, yes.
Buda, yes.
Grossman, yes.
Fulmer, yes.
All right, that's unanimous. I move for adoption of the Resolution 2023-0316 of the governing body of the Town of Cape Charles, as noted, and forego the reading of the resolution. All right, Mr. Hozie.
All right, short agenda, but I've got a lot of comments. First, if you saw the original posting for this meeting, we had originally scheduled a public hearing to deal with the Annexation Agreement Amendment. I just wanted to let you know that it's just taking a little longer than we thought. We just weren't able to get it done for tonight. Things are still moving well, and if no additional problems arise, I hope to have it to you next, at the regular meeting in April. A few weeks ago, I forwarded to you a completely reworked, revised Public Facilities Use Form and Manual. It's consolidated, we used to have different forms and different rules for different places, and now it's all in one place and updated. So I just wanted to confirm that nobody had any problems with that, because if not, it's going live right away, okay?
Great, excellent.
Also, as requested, Katie and Jeb worked on a report for the Demolition by Neglect report that was sent out earlier. Thank you, Katie and Jeb, for doing that. If there's any questions on that?
Oh, that was excellent.
Yeah, I was gonna comment.
What you've done and where you're going relative to that motion.
Yeah, I think that report, yeah, it needs to be made available for everybody to see if it isn't.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that in my comments, that definitely overshot my expectations, and I thought it was great. And, um. And yes, I was hoping it was something that we could share with people, because I get a lot of questions, and I think it's a pretty impressive response to the questions I get.
Agreed.
Okay, we'll do that. The mayor had mentioned to us about us rejoining membership to the Eastern Shore Chamber. And I just, since we had a meeting scheduled, I thought I'd bring it up. When budgets got tight, we cut that, because we didn't really see what we were getting from it. And so I just wanted to check with you to see if that's something you thought we should do. It's not a huge amount of money, it's probably four or $500 for our size of organization. I personally don't think we get a whole lot out of it, but.
Well, we've probably got a lot more than is aware. So, Main Street has a free kind of reciprocal relationship, so Main Street gets it for free, and we share a lot of information that the Eastern Shore Chamber does with all of our businesses. Our businesses benefit quite a bit from that. I look at it in that, I feel like it's, in our supportive business on the shore, the Eastern Shore Chamber steps up to do all of that work. And it costs to do that, just as we know it costs. To me, as a town, I think that we should be a part of that. Before, you know, we had to choose between the North Hampton Chamber, the Eastern Shore Chamber, you may not even know that, but they're, it's all in one now. And I just think it's an important thing for us as a town, as a part of a regional business, support business program, that we should do that. We get a lot of benefit, but I doubt that anybody sitting really at this table, maybe other than Andrew and Andy, from a business perspective, would see what we really get. And Main Street's just worked hard to develop that reciprocal relationship, so that a lot of our businesses don't necessarily have to pay virtually.
Okay, if there's no objection, then we'll go, I got it in my budget to cover it, so, all right.
Thank you.
The other thing, initiative that, not to steal your thunder, Mr. Mayor, but just to bring it up, is that the mayor's been working on a new event that I fully support called Doc Dogs. This is an event that we're targeting for the fall, the September 20.
Final week of September.
Yeah, the 28th through the October 1st. It's like a perfect timing, I think it's, because we have Love Fest in beginning of September, we've got the Hootenanny in the end of October, but nothing right there at the beginning of October, end of September kind of, at timeframe. We're looking at doing it in Central Park, and we're still working through the details. The reason I'm bringing it up is that in order for us to lock in the date, we do have to put some money down. So there's, now, we're hoping to get sponsors to help pay for this, or pay for some of it, but we're gonna need to spend some money now in this fiscal year. So there's $2,500 is what we negotiated now, and we can deal with the rest of it after July 1st. I'll talk to you in budget time for the rest of it. But I just wanted to see, make sure it was okay with all of you, that we go ahead and.
It's the full cost.
It's $10,000 is the full cost. You're supposed to put 50% down now and 50% then, but we negotiated 25% now until after July 1st. And then, you know, we'll see if we can get some sponsors to help with that.
And it's gonna be outside of Cape Charles, it'll be national sponsors, state sponsors. So we, it's a wider group, because this will be a national event. So it's not just gonna be dogs from Virginia, it's gonna be from Florida to Maine to probably as far west as, you know, possibly Texas, because it will be on their national schedule, so.
Yeah. It's a great off-season event, a lot of our short-term rentals are pet-friendly, and that will be a great thing for them to be able to gain. So as a town, we will benefit, you know, kind of in a different way.
And we're looking at impact on the park? I know it's like a huge pool and.
Yeah, we're looking at it, and it's something we're still investigating. Obviously, it's a pool that'll rest on it, but as long as it's not gonna be there super long, it's only gonna be there for three, maybe four days, we should be okay. We've already talked to them about how they're gonna fill it, and how they're gonna drain it, and things like that, to minimize the impacts. So, yeah, we are looking at that. And I've also contacted CCP to make sure they were okay with us using the park in that way, and they were. So if this is successful, we'd like to see this become an annual event.
Yeah, we did it in a creek one year, it was a lot of fun.
It was great.
Yeah, okay, so I'll find the money somewhere in my budget for that.
And if the people who planned it back then are still around, they might have some useful lessons.
He's already told.
Yeah, it's well on the way, yes.
Next, I need to make a shameless plea for help for anybody listening, or if you know of anybody who is willing to serve on our Wetlands Board. We have several openings, and it looks like we could be having an application soon that we'd need to go there. So I would ask anybody who might be interested in serving on our Wetlands Board to please contact the clerk and let us know. And if any of you have any thoughts or ideas, I appreciate you out there pounding the pavement for us, and see if you can help find someone. We need at least one more to get a quorum.
That's what I was just gonna ask.
So, but we have two open spots, right?
We have three.
Three? Oh, okay.
Need one more for a quorum.
I was gonna say, I have a person I'm speaking with that should be in touch with you soon.
Great.
We do have some applications?
I have two applications that I've received over the past, just in the last couple of weeks.
Correct.
Okay. Also, I think you've seen, you've seen the information, it's been on social media and other places about the Vacation Homeowners Group doing their Good Neighbor Program. They came and met with me on it, I think it's a great program, and there's a lot of information out there about it already. I've been contacted about whether or not, if you want, they're willing to come and make a presentation to you guys at the May meeting, if that's something you're interested in.
Yeah.
Okay. I am excited to announce we have two new hires. Adrian Wee is gonna be our new Assistant Treasurer, and we have Harper Matthews is gonna be joining our Public Works staff. So, yeah, we're two very, very good hires, we're very excited about both of them. Adrian should be starting next week, and Harper at the very end of the month. Lot going on, trying to get ready for the season. So Public Works has kind of put together their work plan for the spring, they're kind of taking whole week chunks to do things. So as I'm sure you all know, this week is Beach Week, so they're working on the beach and battling Mother Nature, trying to move sand faster than sheep loads it away, but they're making progress down there. Next week is Street Sweeping Week, so we'll be spending a whole week working on that. I think their plan is to start, same as last year, on the north, work your way down. So we're gonna start off on Washington, kind of work south. It is somewhat weather-dependent, so we'll be going door-to-door, flyers, we'll be doing the best we can to get folks involved and helping with that. The week after Street Sweeping is Central Park Week, so that's where we're gonna be concentrating on a lot of the pent-up repairs needed for Central Park. The week after that, which is the first week of April, is Fishing Pier Week. So we'll be shutting down the fishing pier for that week, and taking care of a bunch of issues with the pier. So a lot going on with Public Works over the next month.
When is Mason Avenue Week?
Every week.
Every day. For landscaping and.
Oh, that. I know we're working on redoing all the contracts right now. I mean, it's been so a la carte for so much, and it's gotten so big, we're gonna have to probably rebid it.
So the, just in keeping in mind, both with Fishing Pier as well as Mason Avenue work, you know, Easter is the 8th of April, so then Good Friday is the 31st, I believe, does that work right? I don't know if I'm doing that right, but April 1st is the community yard sale and the sidewalk sale through our commercial district. So just making sure there's not any heavy work kind of right on those kind of days. And I know that the week between Good Friday and Easter is a heavy visitation week for a lot of schools and things like that. So I was just thinking about the fishing pier and use kind of that week, so just keeping it. We just get a lot of people on both of those weekends, as well as during the week around that.
And I know we always try and be friendly in our announcements, but for example, with the street sweeping, can we be a little hard and explicit that cars that are left, at least on Mason, during street sweeping, will be towed? Because it kind of can defeat the purpose of sweeping one whole block when there's one car. And, I mean, I could give you a list of names of people who ignore every, every such thing, assuming people will just work around them. And so then, you know, the next week, there's a big rain, and the rest of the block gets to suffer because one car wasn't moved, so let's be mean.
I was gonna say something similar.
All right, so with all that, I've saved the best for last. I'm gonna, I need to ask whether or not, I need to speak with all of you sooner rather than later in executive session regarding our capital projects. Would you be available next Thursday or the Thursday after?
I would prefer the Thursday after as.
Me too.
That Thursday is my anniversary, and I think we're headed out to dinner for that one.
Remember the 23rd?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The 30th is better for me, too.
I will not be here on the 30th.
I will.
Okay, it's just, yeah, it's impacting budget development. So, but more importantly, it's completely stagnated all capital projects right now. Just generally speaking, we're getting numbers in that are astronomical across the board, it's not any one project. It's the new reality, the new world we're living in, and how we're going to deal with it, and how we can, what strategies we can use to try to negotiate better deals. I've confirmed with the town attorney that our estimates are, can be confidential and are confidential, and I intend to keep them that way, and that's why we will be doing this in executive session. And I have some thoughts on how to move forward regarding strategies. And again, these are negotiation points that require an executive session. So, all right, I will, so we'll plan on the 30th then.
Did you meet, you can meet maybe prior to with Adam, since he can't be here?
Sure.
You know that.
No problem.
And Councilman Buckholz is not here either, so I need to check his availability as well. So we'll plan then on the 30th for an executive session on strategies regarding capital projects. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, any comments? Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a couple. Mr. Hosey, are you gonna look into the truck issue?
Yes. Could you just give me your, I was gonna ask you afterwards, the VDOT contact you were talking to? If I could talk to them directly, that would help.
All right. Another one, the municipal building cost estimate, have we gotten that?
It's confidential, you'll get it at the executive session.
That means a pill I'm gonna try to not swallow. The last thing I had was the VDOT public hearing on the Rails to Trails. This past Monday, I attended. Didn't turn out to be a public hearing, it had three easels, and people were asking questions of it, you know, so a little disappointing there, but the positive feedback that I had gotten was, through the surveys and positive responses, they had gotten 767 positive responses and only 41 negatives. And it was interesting, I talked to a farmer, and the farmer was concerned with spraying his fields right next to the Rails to Trails. So there are some valid issues that need to be dealt with. But that was a very positive turnout for that event. The survey ends March 23rd, so people can still respond to the survey. What VDOT is expecting to do is present at the March Commonwealth Transportation Board Meeting a recommendation, and then a vote will be taken at that time. And what they're trying to do is set aside $4 million for engineering design work for the entire 49-mile stretch. So that's kind of the logistics on timing and what they're going after. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Yep. Oh, I already covered, I was gonna thank Steph for the excellent report on demolition by neglect, but you already covered that, so thank you. Thanks again, Steph.
Two things. First, just a reminder to folks out there that the Job Fair will be held next weekend, not this coming weekend, but the following weekend, the 25th. It'll be at the YMCA out on 13. And we have a large number of employers, from the school system to hospitality things here in town and other places up the shore. So we hope folks will come out 11 to 2 o'clock at the YMCA. And second is really a question that I've received a couple of times, and that's about the repairs to Strawberry Street where the tank was dug up, and that's, do we have a, do we know when the street will be paved and the sidewalk replaced?
I don't. I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask the building official, I could find out for you if we have anything.
It would be nice if, I don't know whether that's, I assume that's VDOT that's responsible on that, if we can get some sort of a timeline from them.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a property owner, it's doing the work, they're coordinating it through VDOT. I mean, it's a VDOT issue, but it's a private property and a contractor doing the work.
So do, can we say we would like to see, I mean, is there a timeline, that something, that work needs to be done? Do we have any sort of authority on that?
We don't have.
Just wait, there is a VDOT permit, so there is a timeline specified on that permit. Granted, the, it's now been impacted because of what's been discovered with that tank and what happened with that. So I believe the building official can give you a report, because he's been in touch with them, and the various state agencies that were all involved in that cleanup effort, and let you know who's responsible for doing what piece of this, putting it back together.
Because it's all cleaned up, it's got.
But they are still undergoing work to the building that started this, because they were doing improvements, they're doing a renovation and.
Right, of the upstairs, right.
Second floor, so, but I'm sure the building official can give it up to you.
That'd be great.
Anything?
The only thing I have is it's grant season. As you see me pulling my hair out, or if I have more gray, you'll know why. Main Street turned in two big grants to Virginia Tourism to get some support in different things for next year, and supplementing some things that we normally would pay for, but then can be supplemented by, which is how Main Street does most of their budgeting. I just completed, in working with the group, an AARP grant for some of the things that we want surrounding the visitor's center and restrooms and training, like the storyboards and those types of things, you know, it's like throwing. and those types of things, you know, it's like throwing spaghetti to the wall. I've never gotten one through AARP, so if I could break through and just get like $500, I'd be happy. Like, because I feel like we got somewhere, so we, we asked for $44,000, so we'll see. What the heck, we'll see what we get.
That's all?
That's all, you know? And then we're doing one through T-Mobile, which is a first that we've done as well, and we're working on that one. And then there's a downtown investment grant, which is through Virginia Tourism, I mean, Virginia Main Street, they do $25,000 every year. And we're trying to get some resources toward that, the visitor's center inside, kind of some things that would be needed, so we're working on those. So that's kind of, it's all, and then, of course, the, the North Hampton County Infrastructure Grants come very quickly within the next month as well. So I'll be putting out an announcement for Julie to share and for everybody out there, because anybody can apply for those. And we want to get as many people getting money as they can from the county, since we pay more taxes. And they know that's my opinion. Pop it up. That's it.
All right. So I just have a couple announcements, like John said, the Dock Dogs Event, I'm actually very excited about, I'm going to be really happy to bring that back to Cape Charles, and hopefully we keep it as an annual event going forward. There'll be a lot more information put out on that here shortly, so that we can get it, you know, just get it all going and, and get the word out. We do have some announcements. April 1st will be the Community Yard Sale, and where that's going to be...
And throughout town, which Julie coordinates, and then all of the commercial district as well.
Okay, perfect. And then April 6th will be the Town Council Work Session. April 8th will be the Easter Egg Hunt in Central Park. The 20th of April will be the Town Council Regular Meeting, and on April 21st, the 16th Annual Blessing of the Fleet, which we are working on now. So if I could get a motion for adjournment. So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.